Evening, I'd like to officially call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Town Clerk, could you please do roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, Councilman Goldsmith.
Here.
Councilman Trelinger.
Present.
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward. And Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
All accounted for.
Thank you very much. Would you please stand me in the pledge of, join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Alright, first on our agenda, come on down, have a little seat here, is going to be the creative crosswalk update. Miss Pips is here too. The floor is yours.
Hey, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. So this is a follow-up to the creative crosswalks that I had introduced to you guys a little while back. And there's a brief like PDF PowerPoint thing, so if you don't want to skip into the next one. So after our conversations last time, we all kind of agreed that they could be proven to be safer for communities, increase walkability, add interest to the town. And you wanted us to research materials to see what's being used in other places, what we're supposed to use, allowed to use, et cetera. And so with that, I did some research and spoke to groups that did the Rainbow Streets in Salisbury. And so there is a list that I've found of Maryland Department of Transportation, like approved paints for street painting. Talked with them. And so they did this and they started in 2018. I talked to the guy that is in charge of this event. And he said that it doesn't need to be painted every year, but they do it as a community event. It just seemed to bring a lot of people together. So that it still looks good, but they all get together yearly to repaint it. So we do have the material listing and what we kind of thought of was having a spot that is not right downtown to do kind of a test spot. So we have our sites in front of the Firehouse Museum. That street does get used, not obviously as frequently as the other town-owned streets, but it does get used a lot by Pizza Hotline. I know I go back and forth through there when I leave the shop to go home. So there is some traffic there. So Kelly and I thought of doing more, Kelly, I think, on this one, but painting the street in front of that area and taking from Chutes and Ladders, the game, and making it hoses and ladders. So it's all firefighter-related. The design, we don't have, you know, finalized right now, just wanted to kind of get y'all's opinion on it. So really stealing as much from the original game, with the exception of the chutes, obviously, making those hoses, having little hints of the town, you know, like on the bottom of the ladder, there's a, you know, I don't know, a broken guitar or something at the top, it would be fixed, or a dropped ice cream. And then it's, you know, better at the top or the bottom, whichever the case may be. And we thought about also having badges of fallen firefighters from either, you know, the county, the town, which I'm not sure how many there are even, but we'd have to do some research there. But there would be blank spots in the game board as well, so we could have kind of highlighted names of fallen firefighters. So this would give us an opportunity to use a couple of the different paints that MDOT had approved and would also just kind of give that spot as a destination spot to kind of play with, so you could actually play it. Any questions before I go for it? Keep going.
Keep going.
No, okay. And that kind of leads into the Firehouse Museum itself. Did you want to talk about it, or should I keep talking about it? Okay. So the town received ARFA money and some of that money has been allocated to the Firehouse Museum. And it desperately needs to be repainted. And so why not paint it red? Because it's a firehouse. And so we kind of did this mock-up of painting the front of it with a little badge of the La Plata Fire, you know, badge logo on the side. This is again, just a sketch. We do have pictures and we thought we had the original sign that goes on top of the front of those two windows where the long white horizontal bars, it said, La Plata Volunteer Fire. It's not the original that's in the garage now, but there's a mock-up of it. We'd like to have it look like it originally looked on that sign. And painting the red. Again, we haven't gotten any bids. Kelly's overseeing that process as far as the ARFA money goes. But, and we also spoke to Historic Preservation and the Garden Club as well. They're in charge of maintaining the area behind the museum to make sure that we weren't impeding on any decisions or any plans that they had made so far for going forward, since they've spent so much time with the train museum. And this was going to be their next project, that we just wanted to hopefully kickstart it. And whatever we did would be in line with what they wanted to do. And they seemed all for this. In the back, if you don't mind going to the next one, we had talked about another spot for a mural, because if there's a wall there, I might want to paint something or something painted on it. Again, this is just a mock-up and it's something that we can ask for bids for. This isn't something that I would necessarily do. But the Garden Club had mentioned, one of their main members had passed and that they would really like to have a sunflower on a wall of some former fashion. And it just kind of really pops against that red. We'd also talked about getting rid of some of the shrubs and bushes that are to the left there. And that would leave a good-sized horizontal wall space to have, you know, different flowers. We can have native flowers. It doesn't have to just be a sunflower on there. And I believe, I've seen one picture left, I believe.
And then that is the seating area over there. That's where the benches are, isn't that correct? Well, one missing bench, but we aren't going to go there. Yeah, that is. And I love the color on that too. And it has been talked about for years and years. Jim, I'm sure even back when you served, it's been talked about really enhancing that area anyways. I love the idea of something fun, something safe, and just to see how it is received by the community. And Chutes and Ladders is a very, or Chutes and Hoses is a very, a very neat, unique idea. So, yeah.
Yeah, we're also looking forward to tying those all in with the streetscaping and making destinations in the downtown area. These are all the things we've been talking about in council meetings. So I feel like it's just a good way to combine all those efforts and test it out before we go any larger scale.
I love that idea. Council? So I did have a question. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward 3. How close is that to the new apartment complex that's coming on? Because you're saying there won't be any traffic. And so this is an opportunity where there might be traffic and they might get to see it.
It's behind, so we're talking about right behind Claire's Antiques is where that is. So it's a cut-through that I don't believe is going to connect with that parking lot.
Okay.
So they kind of have to weave through. There could potentially be more traffic. It's, you know, it's mostly, like I said, Pizza Hotline delivery. People are in an hour there all the time, but that I've witnessed anyways.
I was just thinking, since we had the apartment complex coming online, that it would be nice for them to have that, you know, close to them, you know, it would be beautiful.
Oh, yeah, right. I wasn't sure if you were meaning like it would up street traffic as far as hours, but yeah. But yeah, it would be a fun little destination for, you know, kids and.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. First of all, thanks for the research and the diligence and getting the information. I am wholeheartedly supportive of this. And like you're saying at the end there, just say yes. And you see different things like this, not only here, but all over the country. Where communities are just trying things. And if it works, great, let me move on to the next one. If it doesn't work, well, then we'll try something else. So I certainly would support that. I would also agree that it does begin to start to, again, generate some community engagement. And this, in my mind, supports the comp plan, was talks about a walkable La Plata. And I do think also it's all part of a larger picture in terms of traffic calming and pedestrian safety. And there's all those other issues and also hopefully any upgrade to Charles Street. And as you mentioned, there are many, many other examples in many other communities around the country that have done or are continuing to do this, even as hopefully COVID wanes and goes away. So thank you.
Councilman Trelinger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Matt Trelinger, Ward 2. I love the idea of having more destination places downtown. The mural that we have up is a great place for people to meet, take photos. As it becomes part of our community, we have more places to go, right? Scavenger hunts can happen and you can incorporate those things over the holidays, like with the Halloween festivities that we do in town and everything. One thing I was curious about is for the local businesses that are kind of in the direct area other than on the backside of that building as far as the sunflower. How much, how much are they involved in it? How much input do they have? I'm sure if it were me, I'd be very excited to have another drawing point to, you know, a local spot near me. But how are they involved in this process?
Quite honestly, I haven't reached out to them. The space that we are looking to paint is only on the town-owned road. I would certainly get, you know, their buy-in on it, but have not thrown the idea past them. It was Historic and Garden Club.
Another question is, I don't know, I mean, we want to kind of quote-unquote "try it." I don't know how we would judge whether it was success or failure. I don't think it would ever fail as it's kind of, it's art, right? I mean, it's a gathering place. How do we know that something like this works and we can then look at other places in town? Like what should we look for for this project?
Well, yeah, the whole, one of the big parts is the durability of the paint to kind of test it to see. And I don't think, I know the street in Salisbury does get quite a lot of traffic. And he had mentioned, you know, that it doesn't need to be painted every year. And I know that, you know, painting Firehouse Alley isn't going to be the same as St. Mary's. But I hope that, you know, we can get an idea of how, how long it will last. And also just the mindset of knowing, okay, then in a year and a half or in two years, we're going to have a plan to change it and kind of get ahead of the game and have, you know, different designs and things. Because I certainly don't want to kind of have us nailed down to a design forever on any street, really. I think it'll be fun to change it up and make it a community event, you know, have as many people that want to be involved, local artists involved to change it up as soon as it's, you know, necessary, for sure.
Thanks for the presentation. I think this is awesome.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if we have ownership of Firehouse Street, make sure that don't. Firehouse Street, right? Firehouse Street and Calvert are not streets that are owned by the town. All of that was a little bit challenging. Nobody can get facilities in that, that's the answer. But it, one of the challenges back there was the fact that it was never a dedicated town street. And neither, we tried to work with the Rescue Squad. The Rescue Squad actually was the holdup in getting Calvert Street dedicated. We actually got the signatures from, we got the Mitchells, and which was very surprising. And we actually got, which we saw were going to be the hardest too, because there were two sets of Mitchell, Tom Mitchell, that has the building in front, and also Van and Cherry and John. We got all their signatures, but David Posey, who built the bank and the Rescue Squad, wouldn't sign. So we didn't get that. And Firehouse Street was always just kind of a road use. So all of that wasn't exactly, you know, it really wasn't alleyway kind of behind at one time. But it really wasn't clear whether or not it looked like it was actually owned by kind of the Mitchells in the front. And theoretically, maybe partially by the town in the back.
Fantastic.
A fully dedicated street unless it's changed.
Cool.
How long ago did we try, explore the possibility of taking ownership? Was that five years ago, 10 years ago?
It's probably been close to 10, I mean, because it was actually supposed to be part of the banking and prior to the Rescue Squad upgrade, where we started doing it. Because the rail that came out on the side theoretically should have come out of Town Street. We didn't, it was a subdivision that was kind of done when things weren't exactly done correctly.
Who maintains that property now when it snows? Who plows it?
Maybe something we can investigate, since it has been 10 years, maybe the temperature will be different and we can have the attorney draw up quit claims that we could have the adjoining properties.
We have them somewhere.
Okay.
The quit claims were all done because John Cherry and Van Mitchell all signed.
Right.
And Hugh Mitchell signed. So they all had signed. It was really, they didn't, David Posey, that was in the middle, you know, the other firehouse that's now in elections. He didn't want to lose the parking spots because there is actually a platform. It's just never been dedicated to anyone. So that was it. The second piece was, it should be important to talk to the Firehouse.
Sure.
Because ultimately, all the stuff that's in the Firehouse, including the old, all of that, the antiques, are all actually in the fire department. They're not actually in public town. So all of that, you know, is kind of fire at the breast, is actually. At one time, Bill Beckman was head of the Firehouse Museum and had really been the one that was driving, getting the museum bumping. And it never really made it go. The big challenge was that building was always, what do you do second floor?
We're not worried about that right now. We're just worried about painting it. So we'll get to that. We are well aware of that.
One of the challenges at the facility, there's like maybe one space on that side with the old independent entrances on the side.
Yeah.
So there were quite a few challenges. We were trying to actually get the Firehouse Museum.
Thank you for that. That'll make sure that we will look into that so that aren't any surprises as we start painting and they say it's not ours. But are we looking for a consensus, Brent, to move forward?
So I do have another question, Mayor, if you don't mind. So say we do identify a place that you can use. And you paint it and it's beautiful. Where does the funding come for the upkeep? I know that you said it wouldn't have to be done in a year, but maybe down the road, where does the funding come? So that's one question. And if we find an obscure place, how do we draw, you know, the public to that spot if it's often away?
Yeah. So, yeah, to answer your first question, typically in the past of our, what's that acronym I'm looking for? All of our contracts with artists have a maintenance plan put into them. So gauging by the test space, wherever this place is, we, I hope that we would be able to figure that out, be like, okay, you're going to, you know, included in your fee is maintenance up until this point. And your second question, I hope, the hope is that it becomes, you know, a spot for kids to go to homeschool classes, you know, J-Cares or something involved. Even, you know, adults, I think it would be kind of fun to do a game like this if it ends up being a game. So I hope, you know, just the, the public interest would be big enough that it would create a similar type of traffic flow, so we can have.
So are we looking for consensus to move forward?
I think she's looking for the yes.
Yes, yes.
The consensus that we're desiring and, you know, of course, there's still work to be done.
Right. So I'm going to ask Council if there's consensus to, should we own that street and have the permission to do that? That location, start our first crosswalk art there? Councilman Goldsmith?
Okay, then we proceed with the, saying this one.
Okay, Councilman Trelinger?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Councilman Jenkins?
Hardy, yes.
Yes, yes, good. Thank you so much. And that's so exciting. So I guess we just have one piece to kind of figure out. But even getting the Firehouse painted and spruced up, then people will actually know where Memorial Garden is, because I don't think that people do. And that will be a draw. That'll be a very good job. Wonderful. Thank you so much for your hard work. I appreciate that. All right, have a good evening. Next is Smecko Lighting, Councilman Goldsmith. This is you, yes?
Well, anything that we have in the history of the place. Smecko sent a letter to us here back in June, indicating that the street's lighting we have now around town basically is antiquated. The lighting they had, this HIV, which is high bright, can no longer be maintained. And there's a living way to LED. By going to LED, then at this point, kind of fire, we think, anything that is breaks to be repaired with LED, anything that's over five years old can be repaired with LED. If by chance it's less than five, then there's some discussion more about whether we help share the course of it. But basically, they will take care of themselves and it's things have to be correct. It was the La Plata beautification. People by the beautiful recommendation that the LED bulbs be installed with amber tone. Apparently, there's some kind of blue lighting and such, and therefore that has actual medical impact upon people because of the bright lighting aspect of it. So the recommendation was basically use no more than 3,000 watts, if you want to call it that, or less, be amber, not brightly. Be aimed down and not diffused up as such. And the recommendation from the Zomby Hubert, which we in turn sent it to them to make recommendation, was to go for a colonial post. Very similar to what we have now. But what we have now can be replaced, can be repaired and such. And so that's what their basic recommendation is, I think, to us at this point. That particular one. And again, the amber, the red dots more below and horizontal confusion. Excuse me, downward confusion, not horizontal. They don't want to spread the light out.
And will that generate enough light to be effective?
Well, you're not using LEDs. So a 3,000-watt LED bulb is a heck of a lot more powerful than sometimes a 5,000 or higher on the old version of it. And, but we don't want to spread it out horizontally, as was said, because that would make it too much light diffuser. And it's not good overall media. My expectation is it would be enough.
Well, and they're the experts, Smecko is. And I know Bobby, you work with that too. And one of the things is that we identify areas that are a little bit darker within town and see if we need to have another light up. So my only concern would be if we are not making it so the light is horizontal and we're making it go down, that it may create dark areas, which we have been trying to avoid.
Past lighting, we'll have to work with Janine to look at the overall lighting. What Smecko does, they provide is actually a GIS overlay that shows how the fixtures downcast. And you can see where the dark areas are compared to the light areas.
Good.
So we can certainly make sure that the upgrade will be recast on the GIS layer. So that when you actually look at the GIS layer, you can see the areas that we're missing. The one thing that would also be unfortunate is to make sure that these are all available on the tariff. Because the way we do lighting in the town, there is a tariff on the lighting. You need to make sure that's part of it so that we can carry that same fixture through to, like Heritage Green and to all the new developments, because all of those are being built on the tariff lighting. So we don't, the developers actually coordinate directly with Smecko to install the street lighting. Janine actually approves the lighting plan. She looks at the lighting plan when they submit that, correct? With the Smecko lighting plan. And so that's all done through Janine's shop. And then we just ensure that Smecko gets them installed. There's no cost to the town upfront and there's no cost to the developer. But then the town, when we assume the dedication of those roads, then we pay for them monthly. And so there's actually a tariff on each one of the fixtures every month. So not only do we pay for the electricity, but we pay a monthly fee for each one of the fixtures that gets installed. So one of the challenges, we pay almost $200,000 a year right now at street lighting, but that also includes the tariff associated with each one of the fixtures. It's kind of, and I just wanted everybody to understand, it's, it's kind of a catch-try-two. Because as a new development comes in, like the size of Heritage Green, everyone in the town of La Plata is going to be paying for that because it's actually a tariff that's paid out over the years. So that's the way street lighting is done. And I need everyone to understand that if you put 1,000 fixtures in that it's coming out of our general fund revenue associated with the town of La Plata. So it becomes, it will increase that 180,000, not just because of the additional electric we use, but also because of the per fixture.
So Mr. Manuel, is that something that is coordinated through you and Director Harrington to make sure that tariff is included on these?
Yeah, I believe within their communication, they would not have forwarded that fixture if it wasn't eligible for our tariff. And what they're speaking about is just our downtown core. They provided a map showing the area, but it will also extend out into the subdivisions as they'll want to keep uniformity between the street lighting. I think it's also, you know, desirable not to end up with the large mast arm poles that are more of your suburban-type fixture as opposed to a more urbanized-type fixture, which is the monopole that you see before you.
I think there were 80 lights probably falling.
Which, that's just in the downtown core.
Elements that we have on, that the new fixture also carries through for that. So that you don't have, for instance, it would be sad, Steeplechase, for instance, had a different fixture in the new section, building doesn't.
And they did that with the replacing of some of the ones within some of the subdivisions. And I know that there was fussing about it. I've heard about that when one of them, some of them went glass-free and the other ones have glass and some are the amber color versus the blue. So, and so that's one of those things that we just need to make sure that we're all on the same level on that one.
That's what I was bringing up, was just to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we can end up with.
Yeah, the documents that Smecko provided also identify these colonial post. colonial post tops as also available as a residential area light, so.
So Mr. Manuel, how do we budget for things like that? You know, if we're, if, if it is a possibility that any new development that comes on will have those light fixtures and we pay the tariff on it, how, how do we budget and plan for something like?
Yeah, say Bobby's department typically. Bobby, if you want to address that, you know, we probably need to get you near a microphone if you're gonna.
I budget for the street lighting and electric, just like I do electricity every year. It's one, it's one of my.
It's one of my budget line items, so I do budget for that every year. And every year, we generally talk to Smecko to find out what kind of increase, because our, you know, we spend about a million dollars with Smecko, and we're a large account for Smecko, between the wastewater treatment plant, all of the wells, but also, street lighting is also a major cost for us. And so every year, we look at what we think, uh, the Smecko increases will be for the year, and we try to budget accordingly.
But have you thought about what this would look like in terms of cost to the town?
Yes, ma'am.
So what are you projecting?
We, we look at on this, it's, it's based on a take down as far as what they're going to start taking down. We didn't see a major change. I think we increased the budget this year by twenty-five percent. And we thought that was both an additional fixture increase, but also, um, additional money for the generation side, for the, for the actual electricity itself.
So Mr. Manuel, my concern is, if we have no other revenue source other than the constant yield tax that we have, where would that additional revenue come from to cover this cost?
Typically, if you're talking about new, uh, streetlights, and we'll say in a more residential nature as opposed to our downtown cores, our downtown core, that's not really expanding. Uh, you know, you're talking about additional revenues and real estate tax because new houses would be built in association with the additional streets and the additional lights. Uh, so I think that's typically where you're going to capture revenue.
Be sold. The homes have to be sold.
They're taxed whether they're sold or not.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Once the subdivision, but that, that is very true. The only real part of our electric that's not covered, for instance, by enterprise, most of our electricity that we use is covered under the enterprise funds. Also, it's based on water and sewer costs. So a lot of our electric is based on enterprise funds. But in this case, it is the one side that's really not. It's in roads and streets, so it does come out of general fund revenue. And it's just nice to understand how it's, and it, I, I believe, just to give you a, I, I want to say it's like twelve fifty, twelve dollars and fifty cents up to like twenty-two dollars per fixture per month as the tariff to take care of the payment towards it. The rest of it is just the electric charge. So it's not overwhelming, and, you know, in any one of these developments, you know, they may be adding in ten to twenty streetlights in any given year, so it's not a lot of money. But over time, you know, on a big development like, uh, Pine Grove, it's going to add up to some cost.
Right, and I was just concerned because our revenue did not increase that much from last year to this year. And if our revenue doesn't increase to cover the cost, where would the funding come from? But if you're thinking, um, rooftops, you know, I still think you said, but it's going to happen whether they're sold or not, I'm fine. Thank you. All right, any other questions? Come on down, Director Harrington. I know.
I just wanted to make the point that if he is correct, Bob, Director Sala is correct, that when we do site plan reviews, subdivision reviews, the lighting plan is part of that. Unless I have something in the code or in the design guidelines that says you have to use this light, I don't have a way of enforcing that. So that is something that we need to think about as part of the zoning code and the design review, um, guidelines. If we want to adopt a certain type of light and make it consistent throughout the town, that needs to be somewhere in policy, in code, to say, you need to use this light, no, no questions asked. That way, when I look at the plan and I see something other than colonial post top type two shield, I guess, I know you can't use that.
So let me get, um, a consensus first so that we can kind of move forward with this. Uh, I'm looking from, from the council, do you agree with Director Harrington, um, to make it so it's uniform throughout the town that we have a specific, uh, type of lamp post identified so that it is, uh, throughout for replacements and all that? So, uh, okay, Councilman Goldsmith?
But what we're talking about here is a specific issue of the downtown.
Right.
You wanted to say this for.
Well, it was noted that the residential subdivisions are not bound to the design guidelines. So again, it's, it's up to the council. If you don't mind having different types of lights in different neighborhoods and in different commercial shopping centers, then it is what it is. If you want to have consistency and you want everything to have the amber color and the, you know, post top shield and the certain type of look, then that would have to be codified in some way that I would be able to enforce.
You just said residential as well as shopping centers and such too. Shopping centers would probably not use this, this would be high enough for shopping center use.
In certain, in certain areas, correct.
Yeah, so they would have to go to a higher ones that they develop and do more at that point.
But that's something to think about, is that when we looking, when we're looking at these recommendations, the shopping centers that we're talking about are the commercial highway zone, and that would be more of the, um, the Cobra type of light is what you're referring to. The downtown CB and CBT, again, do you want to have everything the same? Do you want to have differences? That's something to think about when we're making this recommendation to Smecko.
Because right now, isn't it throughout the subdivisions, they are pretty, uh, similar?
Fairly similar. There are some differences.
So if they are replacing them?
Yes, Mayor, maybe we could all kind of get together with, uh, Pine Grove and a couple of the developers to make sure that we get some consensus and we could show you what they were proposing and everything before we just say, that's the fixture, maybe we could come back at a later time and make a proposal to look at what they're looking, because honestly, I just, I, I haven't seen a lighting proposal at all from, uh, Pine Grove, have you?
They are ordering something special through Smecko.
So, so they could have their own unique fixture in their neighborhood.
I think as long as it, you know, if, if it's along the lines of the colonial, I'm not going into King's Grant and then Agroopia and going, they are so different. Because to me, if they're the colonial looking with the, the same amber, that's the important thing. That's what people fussed about more than, uh, anything else was the different color bulbs on there because it was very obvious. If it does make it, uh, I mean, if we have an opportunity to try to make it, um, uh, uniformed, that's what I would be in favor for, but it's not a deal breaker for, for me, so.
Not to get down on the weeds farther, but also taking into consideration that, you know, the less lumens, the more frequency the pole, the additional costs that are associated with that is something else to keep into consideration when we're limiting to three thousand and maybe it could be five thousand and sort of a, you know, when you think of, uh, Pine Grove, uh, you know, there's that entrance road where there's not going to be residential associated with it. Maybe you could go with a higher lumen, uh, so you could spread the poles a little bit farther. But when you get in a sort of habitable neighborhood, you may want to go to the lesser lumens. So for the health reasons that Councilman Goldsmith identified.
So would we need to adjust the code if we're going to go in that direction before we approve the lighting?
I think if we have a consensus, I think at this point, what we need is a consensus. Like which direction do we want to go? If we need to wait and come back and provide examples, we can do that. But the, I think the, at this point, we need to have a consensus. We then need to talk to Smecko, and then we need to either amend the design guidelines and then the code, do whatever we need to do to kind of put into effect what we, what we're looking to do.
And I think what we've done is we've, we started the discussion about a five gallon bucket, which would be our downtown core, and now we've expanded to higher. So maybe tonight's recommendation is specific to Smecko's, uh, correspondence, which is our downtown core, which is what Councilman Goldsmith has, uh, reported out of the DRB on the uber light fixture, if you will, uh, and also the, uh, I guess the shade of light, uh, for lack of a better term. And then the larger conversation is what Janine's talking about. If we do want uniformity within our, uh, subdivisions in town as a whole, then that's a discussion we can bring back at a future work session, and we can sort of draft up a, some, what if an amendment to whatever code, uh, section would need to be amended for you. So it's something tangible that you can see and say, yes, now I understand or, uh, I need more information. So it would be something that you could consider at a later meeting, at a later time.
Are we looking at a consensus tonight for this specific?
Yes.
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 So with that, we're going to look for a consensus and also to tag along, just so it's said that, um, to see if, uh, Director Harrington can give us more information, um, moving forward with the other subdivisions. So is there a consensus for the downtown quarter and, um, for, uh, Mr. Manuel's instruction is to explore this a little bit more for other areas?
We, we're going to raise what consensus, want to be again, specifically?
No, I think we can leave it vague. Yep, because we'll let the staff get to that. Good, all right, so downtown quarter and, uh, just moving forward as looking on the other ones to do more research. Councilman Challenger, are you, you in agreement? Yes, okay, uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward? I just feel that I need to have more information, so I'm a no on it right now. Okay, uh, Councilman Jenkins?
Downtown quarter, yes, and, uh, let's look at the residential areas.
And I'm a yes, so we do have a consensus that will move forward with the downtown, uh, quarter with the design that the DRB has picked out for, uh, the lighting down there. Uh, with the specifics, that's go above our pay grade, so if it is.
So just for clarification, it's the colonial? Type two?
Yes, it's the bottom one.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
All right, I appreciate that. Um, Director Garner with your, uh, fire hydrants, maintenance and water meters. Come on down. It's good to see you.
Want to do first the fire?
That would be great.
Um, the fire hydrants, uh, is the same company that we've been using over the last couple of years to do our audits and our inspections. Um, and make sure that. It's, uh, ESG Hydrant Services, but it's a, uh, contract we've been using from Charles County. Um, it's a new one that they just, uh, approved for him again this year. It's a five-year deal on a one-year renewal each year, so it's, it's five years, but they, you know, they have the right each year to not approve it. Um, the cost this year is thirty-five dollars per hydrant. That's a fourteen dollar and eighty-one cent increase right over the last year's cost. Yeah, I understand last year's cost was a, on a five-year deal.
Okay, so this is a new contract?
New contract, and that's for the inspection and audit and testing. Uh, the painting, it went up fifty cents, but that's on St. Mary's County contract that we've been riding on. And also, that's a current contract, that the rate went up fifty cents for a fire. Well, it's our recommendation that we continue to use him, and we'd like for you to approve that. That we keep riding the Charles County contract for the testing, the St. Mary's contract for the painting.
All right, and we don't have eyes on this as far as, uh, contracts, because it's not included in this packet. Um, so, uh, Mr. Manuel, uh, what do we need to do to, uh, obviously, we don't have, we're just listening to numbers, um, that it went up fourteen dollars, and how many, um, fire hydrants?
We're going to use last year's number, that one, or six hundred and seventy-five.
For an additional fourteen dollars and how many cents? Fourteen eighty-one, so essentially fifteen dollars.
Mayor, can I just say on this, we, our procurement guidelines allow us to piggyback on other competitive bid contracts through other. In this situation, the example, that's been, um, contract with ESG, there, we, we will develop our own contract with them. We're just piggybacking on what Charles County's contract is paying at this point. And this is what we're seeing, you know, had this been a five-year contract that was started two years ago, it would be three more years at the same price. It's a little bit hard this year because right with all of this inflationary increases and all of the increases they even this contract. And so now you're seeing this sudden blip after five years, so the price was fixed for five years. They went out and bid this contract, and so suddenly you're seeing this correction. And so it's not, and, and now on the painting contract, you don't see this because this is in the middle of that contract.
Right, right.
And so it's a different contract, same company, but we're trying to, eventually, we're going to get to where we'd like to be doing a third of the town each year. But because we hadn't done it in so long, and because the Insurance Institute, the, um, in, in order to maintain their highest standards for the Insurance Institute, you want to test every year. You should be testing fire hydrants every year. And so we're trying to do that, and we found the most effective way to do it, it's through contractor, and he has done a good job for us. And if we're paying this exact same rate that the county pays, we're paying what St. Mary's pays for.
So, um, I have two questions. Do you actually have a copy of the bid that you can, um, make a copy of and give it to council tonight? Um, if not, that's, what is the timeline of urgency and how long is this contract good for? Because if we don't have eyes on it, I don't know if you guys are comfortable moving on with that. I like to kind of digest the, look at it a little bit before making a decision, especially when it's a fifteen dollar increase on six hundred and seventy-five, uh, units. Um, so how long?
You suggest that if there was a consensus that we wanted to kind of move forward, we could send it around electronically to the council before you would actually vote on it at the business meeting next week? Would that be possible? We can do that. It's on the agenda for consideration tonight, but we do not have to consider it tonight. We can get the, like you say, it's a, um, it's a procurement that was done by, what, Charles County and St. Mary's County? So yes, it's published, so we can definitely get you the, the, uh, information that you desire.
It's for consideration and not adoption.
This would be moving from, if you were comfortable with it, which it sounds like you're not, then we can, uh, pull this from la- later legislation and provide you with the information, then we can bring it back next week. And if you're comfortable with what you, the information we provided, we could bring the legislative back next week for your consideration. Guess that's one of the advantages of meeting every week.
Just consideration, not adoption.
I would be for consideration of adoption next week after you had the opportunity to review the information.
Okay.
And if it's of any help, there is, there may not be, uh, contracts, but there is, uh, confirmed numbers from Director Garner in the last paragraph of the legislation itself.
Okay, and, and I think that, um, Michelle is making a copy, so we can.
So you'll have it before you leave tonight?
We will, and if we want to, when we get down to legislation, if we want to, um, you know, if people feel comfortable, if council feels comfortable with that after looking at it, then we can go forward with that, or else we can, um, push it to next week. So we'll see what they feel.
Certainly one week won't hurt us in that much, I mean.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that, and, yeah, that is tough when you have a great deal for five years and it's time for, um, a renewal. So it's, and it is a tough time right now with, uh, supply issues and all of that, that, um, I can see what drives the cost up. So thank you for that. We'll, uh. So it's about a total of fifty-eight thousand dollars for the painting and for the?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Six hundred and seventy-five. Councilman Goldsmith?
It's not pressure, it's flow.
Flow.
Yes, um, a red hydrant is zero to five hundred gallons per minute. A, an orange hydrant, am I right? Yeah, red's a little, red, red's zero to five hundred gallons per minute. An orange hydrant is five hundred to a thousand. A green hydrant is one thousand to fifteen hundred gallons per minute, and a blue hydrant is fifteen hundred to two thousand. And the reason that that's very, very important is because with the size pumpers that we have today with the fire departments, if they have, for instance, a twelve hundred and fifty gallon per minute pumper, or they have a fifteen hundred gallon per minute pumper, we have to be extremely careful that if they hook to an orange hydrant or a red hydrant, they could pull a vacuum on our system. And from a water quality standpoint, that sends me right through the roof as the licensed operator.
And from a water quality standpoint, that sends me right through the roof as the licensed operator. Because with a water system, everything has a positive pressure. And so you're always having positive pressure. So even when we're out there fixing, if you have a crack in the system, the water is flowing out. It's not letting contaminants in. So you're constantly wanting to keep that positive pressure. However, we do have in our system and some of those kind of things around. And if somebody goes over there with a big pumper and hooks up to that where they have two pumpers in the area that hook to that, and suddenly they draw more volume than what those hydrants can provide, the bottom line is they'll draw a vacuum on our system. And instead of the contaminants staying out, they get drawn in. And that's very dangerous. So we try to work with the fire department all the time. We train their guys to make sure that they understand what that color coding is. And it's very important for the color coding that with changes to our system every year, especially with all this new development that's going on, which changes our flows and everything throughout the whole system, it's important to go back and to constantly test the system to ensure what our volumes are so that they don't go out there and hook up a couple of pumpers to low-volume hydrants. I will say that we're in pretty good shape, unlike, you know, some of the old downtown DC, you know, where they run it, they don't have water and things like that. Almost all of our hydrants in town are either green or blue. So we do have a few that are orange and they're usually on dead ends or things like that. But for the most part, you know, as we've been testing, all of our hydrants are green and blue. So it is important to understand why we do it. And, you know, when suddenly you have a new development like Pine Grove that's right in the middle of town, it's going to change our flow coefficients throughout the entire town. And so we constantly have to be aware of what that's doing with our hydrants. Jeff actually instituted, last year or two years ago, when we put the tape, we were painting the hydrants, the top of the hydrant, the color that they were color-coded. But we actually have now adopted the same Charles County standards. So now we're using the tape. And the idea there was if hydrants change, then all we do is replace the tape on the hydrant. I worked with Steve Shanahan from La Plata Volunteer Fire Department to make sure that they were all in agreeance with that policy. They were, because that way, no matter whether they were in the county or in the town, they knew that the color coding was based on the band and not on the color of the top. And that we didn't have to actually go in and repaint the hydrant. We just changed the tape color.
I do have a question on the contract renewal for the fire hydrant painting. It says that it's, the contract renewal terms shall commence on March 1st, 2022 and terminate on February 28th, 2023. So this has been sitting around for just a wee bit?
It's just making it to you.
Okay, okay. And then, so. And in February, so February 28th or March 1st, I guess, of 2023, we will have to have initiated a new contract, renew that. They will. And look at.
Increase our price based on new contractual price.
That's the time they would do.
Have to come back and get reapproval from you all to increase the price because of the contract change.
Just for the record, I understand the actual contract, the certificate of insurance and everything, I believe, is only filed here at the town hall. I believe that it's probably in Kevin's possession.
Okay, so this.
This is just referring to their actual contract that I do not have.
So this one that it shows from the Charles County Government Department of Fiscal and Administrative Services, they're just showing that they have awarded the contract to the county as well. So we don't actually have a physical contract that we can look at that says the new price is 1481 increased?
No, Jeff. The, what's the guy that ends up?
Rich?
Rich. He's agreed to give us the county price. So the bottom line is whatever the county's price was, he has agreed to give us that price. All we're doing is piggybacking on their procurement. It will be a different contract for the town of La Plata. We will ensure that we had a contract of the same terms as what that is, if you give us that.
It's a rider clause. It's typical in government contracts that gives other communities the ability to ride on that procurement so that we don't have to go out and do our own procurement and come up with the same number.
It's kind of like the situation that we used with Sourcewell, where we use another free bid contract.
So today we're looking for, are we looking for approval or consensus to move forward?
It sounded like the council wanted to have the opportunity to review the information, so we'll provide you that information. And we can push it to next week's agenda if that's the will of the council.
Well, let me see what the will of the council is. Do you all want to see the contract and then just push it one week? Or are you comfortable with the letter from actually seeing this that says it's $35 per hydrant, which we know is a $14.81 increase to the five-year contract that was executed five years ago? Would you, Councilman Goldsmith, would you prefer to, are you comfortable with this information or would you prefer to see an actual contract next week? Okay, Councilman Challenger?
Given that it's in line with the county and given that it sounds like from Director Stahl that this is in line with market value, I'm okay with this.
Councilman Bryant Ward?
I'm okay with this.
Councilman Jenkins?
I'm okay, but just one quick question, if I may. So this is, this is all in our budget?
Yes.
In our current budget?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay.
And I am fine with that, too. This actually helps.
This helps.
Thank you. Yeah.
And so using this kind of procedure, it does save you time to procure stuff, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I want to get that on the record.
To understand, this pricing that they're getting is based on thousands of hydrants.
Got it.
Like, and also 675.
We were doing when we were piggybacking on the Carver County paving contract.
Right.
We get the benefit of getting a price based on, you know, thousands of hydrants and we're just adding on to them. And, you know, if we just went out and we separately procured it for our 600 and some hydrants, most likely we would have a higher price.
Okay.
Because we're not the economy scale.
Thank you.
And then our next item on the agenda, I see with the water meters, that you are requesting 500 more water meters to tune of $180,000?
Yes. Normally buy anywhere between 100 and 150 meters a year. Those are bought normally in 50 at a time and those are under the, the amount that needs to come to you guys. So, but the continued growth in steeple chase and in agroapi and the rejected growth of pine grove, we thought it was necessary to start, start big, big stock poly meters. The, we want to order 500. You have to understand that the turnaround time now is 17 weeks. There's this four that we're normally used to. We have 154 that's ordered that we ordered back in February that we still haven't gotten.
Oh, wow.
The objective, the delivery date is October 14th. We're praying to God that they got. We have about 40 meters on hand and that the growth that we're already seeing right now, it's, it's going to be scary. We're asking that the council to approve the 180,500 meters so we can start stock poly meters.
And do you have storage for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, just to understand the pricing, the $360 per meter is the price we've been, has been the price for our meters all along, ever since we've had the contracts. It bounced straight through Mueller.
The sad thing is, Eric, all of these things, it scares me. Because, for instance, section B over Pine Grove, we just switched all of the, they were going to use ductile iron piping originally for the water over there. And we just switched it the other day because the delivery for ductile iron piping, if you ordered it today, they were saying they wouldn't get the pipe until January of 2024. Almost a year and a half for ductile iron piping. And to be honest, we actually like the C900 better, the PVC piping. But it's been, these lead times are just getting worse and worse. We, I just literally on our Southwest Quadrant Pump Station, we ordered the generator for that pump station in May. And when they gave us the lead time of a year, which would have been May of '23, we thought, my God, that's ridiculous. We got notification last week that that delivery is now November of 2023. So they backed us up another six months on that delivery.
Well, thank you for thinking, being proactive on this. I will open the question, floor for questions.
Two questions. Number one, is there a concern, and this just goes to the volume that we're busting that you guys are talking? Number one is, is there a concern that a number of these could go unused, right? And they're just sitting and we didn't end up needing the amount that we actually request? Say that the timeline for building doesn't go the same way that it's planned because of market reasons and so forth. And we just have a stockpile of items that by the time they're used, and this goes into the second part, by the time they're ready to be used, they're actually obsolete. You know, because we've had that with water meters in the past where I don't know what the, with the battery situation where they had to be switched out after, what, two or three years or something like that? So if we request it, it takes even longer, right, for a year and a half, two years in? Is there a chance that they end up not getting used or obsolete by the time that we do use them?
The meter itself is good. What gets replaced is the communication box, the battery is actually good, not in use until the meter is actually starting to be in use. It's still as, as we speak, it's still a 20-year life on the battery. And what we've been updating is the communication box itself.
Which replaces the battery?
Which replaces the battery.
And that's a part of the unit?
Yes.
But the meter itself stays in place. When you go in, you just take off the communication box and put it in, meter stays in.
And I will say, I think historically, we have built, and last year was a good example. We had never built over 100, but we've been close to 100 for the last several years. We were 117, I think, last year. So with that being the case, Pine Grove has already pulled their first 17 permits. They're telling us they're going to do 200 to 300 a year. So, you know, and they have the RRA that says they're able to do 200. Our problem is being able to plan and to make sure that we have a supply. We're not, we don't want to be the controlling factor. You all are the controlling factor of how much you spend to build. We, we just have to be able to provide service to whatever comes forward. And our goal in this is to make sure there's enough. And I think even in a, if, if it was me and I was looking at this, even in a worst-case scenario, and you were only building 100 a year, it would still be a five-years-to-buy. And so I don't think that this is an unreasonable, I mean, I'm not saying we should go out and buy 3,200 meters because that's what's going into Heritage Green. We're just trying to make sure that you don't have the developer standing here at this table going, you know, we've invested all this money and now we can't open a house and sell a house because you all don't give us the meter?
Yes, my comment, hell has no fury like a builder who can go to closing because we can't get a water meter in the ground and they can't get payment for their construction loans and everything else.
We're trying to be a little proactive and just make sure, but I don't think, listen, a recession could happen tomorrow and things could slow back down. But I do think this is not an unreasonable number of meters to keep in stock when there is certainly the possibility. I mean, if you looked at Janine's last development chart, it looked like we were going to be, you know, close to 500 every year for the next.
It was based on the developer, what the developers wanted to do. To be the actual number. That's why we're on a realistic development capacity analysis, taking into consideration water allocations and expulsion allocations. And we'll say that we do recoup the cost of the water meters as part of the utility permits. So this is an upfront cost that will be recouped over time.
Thank you for that. And the fact that we are kind of locking into a price that we have had since the beginning is important, too. And that was a great question, Councilman Challenger, because I worried about the same thing with it becoming obsolete. But if it can be changed out, that makes more sense to me. So thank you for that. Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had the same question, so thank you, Councilman Challenger. But my other question would be to piggyback off of that. How much, if the communications meter is what we have to upgrade, what's the cost of that meter if it comes with this unit already?
The meter 3.6, the communication box.
Okay. So, but you're saying what we've had to replace is the communication box?
And they have been underpinned.
Okay.
And we, they've been giving us those. We've been turning the ones that go bad back in. It's a huge pain to have to go into people's houses and.
You wear that away when you said they give them to us.
Yeah.
I'm good. You said they give them to me. I'm good.
So, oh, go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Councilman Jenkins, word for piggybacking on the previous questions. And I guess this is from my education. I thought Mueller was getting out of this business. I'm a little confused by that.
Water Smart, that was the.
Water Smart.
Software.
Okay. So the, so this communication box can talk to Water Smart?
Oh, yes. It calls into our system.
So hopefully, so hopefully, we're not going to get a repeat of this agony you went through and we went through in the future. I know you can't guarantee that, but I'm just concerned.
Okay.
No, they're recommended vendor, maybe. They're related, but it's a separate.
Okay, well, you've clarified my concern. Thank you.
All right. So I guess we're looking for a consensus to move forward with the 500, a purchase of $500, I mean, 500 units at $360 for these Mueller system. Why am I talking meters? So, Councilman Goldsmith? All right. Yes, Councilman Challenger?
With the added information that these are recoup costs later, absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, I'm assuming again it's in the budget someplace.
It is.
And I am a yes as well. And you know what, Director Stahl, why don't you just stay here and give us a little bit about the Mary Ball Pump Station? What do you have going on there?
Thank you. I helped you on yours. I, Mayor, we had an interesting challenge at the Mary Ball Pump Station. We have two 380-gallon-minute submersible flight pumps in the Mary Ball Pump Station. And right at the end of July, one of them basically completely fell apart. It, something either went through the pump, but it literally broke the entire volute, which is the piece that the impeller sits in and spins and broke the impeller. We weren't sure what actually went in there, but we sent it over to Hills Electric over on the eastern shore for repair. They came back and quoted us a price of $15,500 to repair the pump. I am very cautious when we do pump repairs that we do not generally, I try not to exceed 50% of the cost of a new one because at that point, it's generally better to go ahead and buy a new pump. In this case, it was over 80% of the cost of a new pump. So it clearly made sense to buy a new pump. I didn't want to get too much into the weeds, but as you know, we have, we are working towards the redesign of the Mary Ball Pump Station. We are actually, there are two pump stations at the Mary Ball Pump Station. There was an older Smith &amp; Loveless pump, and there was the new pump that we built in 1988, excuse me, 2008. We are now operating the one pump station up there that is operating with two 380-gallon-a-minute submersibles. Because of all of the development in that northern sector and the possibility of a new apartment building up there and all of that additional flow coming into that station, we have a plan to rebuild both pump stations. So the idea was that we would take the old Smith &amp; Loveless set of pumps out of the old pump station. We will split the flow into both pump stations and we will move the two current 380-gallon. We will split the flow into both pump stations and we will move the two current three hundred and eighty gallon a minute pumps over to the old pump station. And we would buy two new six hundred and twenty-five gallon per minute pumps and put them into the new Mary Ball Pump Station. Well, understanding that plan and what I, what I'm planning for here, um, Brent and I are working on a cost sharing arrangement with some of the developers up there, uh, Magnolia Gardens, also with, um, Generation Properties and with, uh, Charles McPherson's property where they would share in the cost of these changes. The challenge is two things. One, the Mary Ball Pump Station, currently we do not have a spare pump. So right now we're operating with one pump. If something happens to that pump, you're going to see me run out of here and go running up there because we're going to have to set up a pump around very, very quickly with our Godwin pump so that things don't back up all over the place. Um, it's very dangerous to just have one pump. Um, the idea here would be in this situation, and the reason that you see this in front of you is because if I was just going to buy one pump, it would be seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars and I'd be below the procurement. I think the most, or the best thing to do in this situation is to buy two pumps, put two brand new pumps in there. And that way, when we go to shift them over to the old Mary Ball Pump Station and we redo that, we'll have two new pumps there and we'll have two new pumps in the bigger station.
And you can use the one that you would need to replace as.
As a spare.
Yep.
And we would have a spare. So it's the older pump and it would be a spare for us. I think the right thing to do in this situation is to buy two pumps. We, um, asked, and here again, because we use flight pumps and everything is really brand specific because of how we have them wired in, the, um, the dealer for flight pumps is actually Sherwood Logan in Annapolis. That's our dealer and that's who we would have to buy flight pumps. But because we were having the pump repaired at Hills Electric, they're the dealer for the Eastern Shore. And I can actually buy through them to replace pumps that I currently have. That's a kind of an internal thing. So I was able to get pricing from both. And I showed you that they sent that over to me in an email format from Hills. Um, Sherwood Logan actually had a much better price. They were, and that hasn't been the case in the past. But in this situation, we could buy two of them at seventeen thousand. I think it's seventeen five. I'm sorry.
Seventeen eight.
Huh?
Seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Seventeen eight, yes. So, um, it is a total of thirty-five, uh, six. And I, I would recommend to you tonight that we buy two flight pumps. We get them a mortar because I can have them in ten days. They're actually built in Racine, Wisconsin.
All right. Um, thank you for that. Questions from the floor? Counsel? I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, all right. So I'm looking for a consensus that we do move forward with the purchase of two versus one, uh, pump. All right, Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I'm in support.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Yes. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you all very much. You know, every time you come to sit here, you're costing us a lot of money, a lot. And you do it so well. Thank you, uh, both for all of your hard work. You, um, you always outdo yourself and I greatly appreciate it. All right, moving on to our next item is, uh, the Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three. Um, and this is, uh, town manager and, uh, town clerk?
Uh, the town manager has conveniently stepped out. Resolution twenty-one, twenty-three was, uh, uh, passed, um, by this council on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one to, um, give certain specific rules or procedures to the town council on the way they conduct meetings. Um, most of this is directly from code. Um, and, uh, there's, there's just been some things that over the last several weeks, during contributions from council, as well as some things that Legislative Services has gone through themselves, we've tried to organize it a little bit better, make it a little bit more direct and to the point, and, um, try and cover a little more ground. Um, you've had it, uh, for maybe not long enough to complete digest it all. You've, it's been policy for over a year, but the revisions have been going into place over the last several weeks. Um, a major example of some of the revisions is, um, uh, section three-five talked about, um, uh, preservation of order, and, uh, we felt that it didn't really belong in section three-five. So we moved it to section six where it made a little bit more sense. There were a couple of things like that. Um, uh, this was clearly put together, um, from a lot of different, really great sources. So we tried to unify it so it seemed like one single document rather than several put together. Um, there is, in, for example, uh, in section five-four under public hearing, that was, uh, made more clear as to what the process is. As over the last year, we've had an opportunity to have several public hearings and learned quite a bit from the process. Um, and, um, another section in public hearings, uh, uh, section D in second five-four under public hearing was an addition, um, this year, or this month. Um, and there's, there's quite a bit that's been moved around, um, worded a little bit more clearly. And, um, if the council sees so fit to, uh, um, to approve it, legislation will be introduced next week to, uh, bring authority to this document as you had with Resolution twenty-one, twenty-three in the past.
Thank you very much for the hard work that, uh, Legislative Services has done on this. It's a nice job cleaning up the language and very specific with putting town council instead of just council um, to make sure that we all know who we're talking about. And, um, I like how you eliminated, um, the work sessions and made them regular meetings. And I think that's so important. It gives the council a little bit more flexibility and we can still have special meetings, um, on days outside of our Tuesday meetings.
I'm glad you brought that up. We could not find in code or any other way, uh, any other previous statements or, or documentation why things were divided into work sessions and business meetings. It's not supported by code, but that doesn't mean code says you can't do it either. What code states is that there are three meetings a month. Um, well, there's nothing that says that they have to be specifically handled this way. Um, so your meetings could all be the same, three of them a month. You can pass legislation at any time rather than waiting for the business meeting. There may be some things, proclamations, swearing in, things along those lines that you want to save for the last meeting a month, just out of, out of tradition or consistency. But again, there's nothing in code that says you have to, and there's nothing in code that prevents you from doing it. Um, and so we didn't really see why it was that way. No one could tell us why it was that way. So we decided for the convenience of the council to make it easier for you to do business from week to week rather than month to month. In keeping with that, there's also nothing that doesn't say that you can't review minutes at the beginning of every meeting from the previous meeting, um, rather than waiting an entire month and a half to approve the minutes from the beginning of the previous month. Um, it's generally considered, uh, common practice with every organization I've been involved with, uh, corporate or government that the minutes are approved at the next meeting. And I think it's in your best interest for open meeting, you know, purposes to do that, and it's very possible to do that.
And I noticed that was put into the agenda, um, uh, description on what we're doing, and I do like that idea. My one concern before I open it up to the, uh, floors, I, I know this is, um, I guess a living document. It will change as the times change. But, um, on, uh, section one dash one, where it says that, uh, to further advance the core values outlined in the strategic plan as adopted by, uh, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, do we need to be so specific with dates and times? And do we need to even, um, put, uh, that in there since this is just our rules of procedures? I mean, do we have to outline that because that is what a strategic plan does?
That's true. I'm, um, um, the mayor's putting me on the spot because I've told her several times, this document pertains to the council.
Council only.
Just the council. Um, and it's, it's an easy statement to make that the strategic plan refers to the strategic plan of the town and not, not necessarily every meeting that the, that the council conducts. Um, so that, you know, again, if the council prefers light item, line item veto, they're welcome to go through and pull out whatever they want. But, um, um, we've had, asked for contributions a month and a half ago. But, um, and I haven't, uh, basically, we haven't changed the document except to be more clear.
Right.
Um, but if, if the council has issue with that, that's not a problem.
I will open it up to the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I don't have a problem with the strategic plan as adopted by, you know, adopted August twenty-third. But my, my concern would be is if we, um, amend the strategic plan and adopt the new one, we would have to change the date. The only thing I would be concerned about is just saying strategic plan, um, current strategic plan and not put the date. So we wouldn't have to go back and amend this document every time the strategic plan was amended or changed.
That would be very nice if we didn't have to amend this every year.
That's exactly where it was, my point. Thank you for clarifying that. Uh, Councilman, uh, Jenkins?
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, word four. Um, I was the one that gave the comment to put this, to add the section one dash one, item E. That was my suggestion, uh, only because, and, and I did it frankly, because it's just to emphasize if we're going to have a strategic plan, we should refer to it and it should guide us, including our meetings. And the idea of removing the date makes perfect sense. The other issue, and again, I appreciate the, the client clerk and the staff doing this, and, and I guess my only consternation is where, what, I don't know where, where all the changes are. Because typically, what I remember is when you have legislation, caps mean that it, it's new items. Strikeout means you're deleting it. And frankly, I, I just don't see that. So I'm, I mean, I, I read it, so I, I don't know where all the changes were, were.
So they're indicated on, in the column, uh, on the, uh, in the margin.
See that here. Okay. And maybe I didn't open it, open it the right way, but I don't see it.
What, what we can do is we can forward to you the tracking document that we were working on. Somehow Meeting Manager doesn't like to translate Word and all the things that are in it. So it, it eventually, essentially made it a PDF. Those annotations can be moved on to you very easily if you'd prefer.
Well, that's just me because I'm a pain.
No, 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 no.
I think we'd like to see the changes.
I, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable for you to compare one to the other and let's see what the differences are. I think that's completely right.
I guess I just, um, when I downloaded it and printed it, it showed all of them. You don't have that either?
Nope.
This is a, ours is a Word document. It's not a Word document.
No, it's a PDF.
The agenda, I, I went and did the agenda package and.
Right, and so did I. That's how I get all the documents.
Oh, my goodness. I have, I chose every single one for me.
Nope.
I guess I won today. I don't know why.
You may have. And Meeting Manager, I'm going to put everything out. I put it on my computer and I do it digit, digitally.
Okay, so that would be very helpful if it could be sent out.
Tomorrow morning, we can send you out. No, no, no. No, I don't think it's a criticism at all. I think it's very wise for you to be able to take a look at all the changes and, and, and what's there. Um, we would have done the markup, but if you've never done the markup, that's another month. Okay, exhausting.
I get it.
That's why we pay someone else to do it. Um, but.
Thank you for that, clerk.
Would it be the.
No, I'll, I'll get the tracking document out to you tomorrow.
Will the council for us to send that out to you? You can review it before the business meeting next week. And it, it needs to be pulled for further consideration. We can move it to the first work session in October. If not, and council's comfortable with, uh, rendering a decision next week, you have the option to do that as well.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that was quite perplexing because I have it written there. I was like, I don't know.
You don't.
Well, thank you very much, uh, to Legislative Services for all of their hard work on that and for, uh, council for their input, um, on that. So we will, uh, wait to get that via email so that everyone has the opportunity to look at the track changes. We will discuss it next week, and if we're comfortable, we will see it in resolution form for adoption. All right. Thank you very much. Going on to the next one is Cornerstone Government Affairs. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. This came before you last week. There was, uh, discussion regarding, uh, this request. I have put at your table, uh, copies of the amended agreement, which includes a highlighted section. Uh, what we heard last week is council wants to be more involved in the process and have more regular updates. Uh, Cornerstone has proposed the language of meeting with the town council bi-monthly, which would be every other month and/or, or as needed. So it can be more frequently if necessary, depending on, uh, you know, the level of communication that we need on any, in, any of the listed items. So, uh, that was sort of what Cornerstone thought would be a benefit to keeping the entire council, I guess, up to date on the status of any various number of items that, uh, Cornerstone is tasked with, uh, representing the town.
All right. So I am looking for, um, uh, any questions from the floor?
I have one, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward three. Um, it was my understanding that mayor and council could not enter into an agreement. So should this not be to, made out to the town manager if this is the actual MOU that we're going to sign as opposed to the mayor? And then my, my second question would be, there, I, items on here, um, we've heard about Box Elder, but the last I heard about it, that it was a hangup with the county and not so much the state. So, um, where, where are their, their actions here and what's the resolution or what's the proposed plan? If we can get things like that, that would be excellent. Then the last thing, I don't see the need to have a lobbying group, um, which is supposed to be engaged in legislation to be assisting with the development and operation plan for Dorchester Community Center. That, they have a board for that. And so why would they need to be, you know, that's, that doesn't, like, it's out of scope for me, um, for them to be doing that.
If I may, uh, I'll address the second, uh, the assist in development of operate. I think that is intended to reference potential funding.
Can we change it to funding?
Yes. I think that as long as they're acceptable to it, it will be funding. It would not be, they're not, I don't think they have any intention of going in. So I will, uh, work with them to amend that language as well as, uh, you address the, uh, correspondence being titled to the mayor. Uh, I can have them change that as well because most of our legislation authorizes me as the chief executive officer to sign. So we can, I can also.
Okay. That's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, word four. Just a clarification. I thank you for adding the last bullet about meeting with the council. Uh, just, uh, just, just, uh, for consideration, uh, perhaps we could schedule some, a meeting, a kickoff meeting sometime after the election because there's going to be a new governor, a new general assembly. And perhaps it would be good to kind of get a sense and be on the same sheet of music as we enter a new general assembly with a whole new administration. And, and what that does or doesn't mean, I mean, we won't have a crystal ball, but at least we'll have a common knowledge about things as we enter into a new administration. I would just make that suggestion.
It is my goal to include more, uh, communicate more with council and provide additional updates between the time that you're hearing from Cornerstone directly. So I want to do a better job of communicating with you as individual council members to keep you apprised of what's going on as well. So the kickoff may be great for our, you know, after the election, but I will be communicating as information is available. Don't you write that down?
So, uh, Mr. Manuel, uh, I mean, are there any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Challenger, before I go.
Councilman Challenger, word two. Um, thank you for, um, making this change. Um, I was curious, when discussing issues of, um, this type, uh, with council, does any of that fall under closed meeting session type of activity in any way, shape or form? Because you would think that some of these topics are very sensitive in nature as it relates to our surrounding partners and.
You just gave me a reason to provide an excuse for myself. That's one of the reasons why I don't like to communicate some of these matters in an email or written communication. I would much rather have a oral communication, if you will, uh, to keep you apprised. But at the same time, uh, yes, and I would not share in an, you know, in an affordable document, for example, any, uh, protected communications. Even if I, I did, I would probably have to, if in the event that a, uh, where a request was put in, that information would have to be redacted as covered information.
Yeah, I guess my question is, I mean, you know, as we're trying to, you know, maybe the goals are more open-ended, but the strategy is not, I, I guess. Is that?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Goldsmith, you go. All right. So, Mr. Manuel, just so that, um, I'm making sure that I am on track here. If we, uh, If we, can we receive a consensus from the council to move forward if the changes are made as Councilwoman Bryant Ward had suggested, meaning that it's made out to you, that it is funding, the second to the last one is changed to funding? And is that the only other one?
Yes.
And the dates, well, we would, would we backdate it?
We could backdate it to have it a continuous engagement. So we would backdate it to the expiration if that's the will of council. We didn't take action. Let me go back to the resolution date introduced.
That's what
Well, the legislation really wasn't introduced. I guess it was considered. It never made it to the legislative. So we'll have to amend that as well to the twentieth.
All right, so I'm looking for a consensus to move forward with those changes as we indicated. Councilman Goldsmith?
I support it.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mayor James is a yes as well. Thank you very much. That brings us down to, it looks like legislation, if I am correct on this. So Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-six, fire hydrant for introduction and consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Resolution concerning Fire Hydrant Maintenance for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Agreement for the Maintenance and, I don't know the word, Testing of the Town's Fire Hydrants.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-six as written?
I make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second. Twenty-two, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay, correction on that. And then, do I have a second for Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-six? That's Councilman Challenger. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. For Mr. Manuel, Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven, Water Meters for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. A Resolution Concerning Water Meter Purchase for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Purchase Agreement for the Purchase of five hundred water meters of varying sizes.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven, Water Meter Purchase.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-eight, the Mary Ball Pump Station.
Yes, Mayor and Town Council, for your consideration of adoption, a Resolution Concerning Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Replacement Pump Purchase, pumps purchase, plural, excuse me, for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract for the Purchase and Installation of Submersible Pumps at the Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-eight as presented?
Madam Mayor, a move that we accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-eight as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five, Cornerstone Government Affairs for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. A Resolution Concerning Cornerstone Professional Services Agreement for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Agreement for Professional Services and for Government Relations in Maryland and all matters related thereto.
So do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five with the change of the date of introduction to September twentieth? And I guess that's the only thing we need for that. Do I have a, yeah, do I have a motion with that change?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A move that we accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five with the noted correction of the date.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to future work session topics.
All right, excuse me. Madam Mayor, Town Council, let's see, Craig has listed parking setback and traffic calming. I think, as you're aware, we had talked about maybe doing that at this work session. Chief Shinner was out of town, so we thought it would be better served to push that into October. Also, Mod One Waste Water Treatment Plant, the bid opening was Friday. So the engineer is currently reviewing the submissions for completeness, and if found complete, we will be forwarding it to USDA for their review. And if all is found to be in order, it will come back to the council at a future meeting. Also, Retail Rate Consulting Services is something that we've spoken with a consultant on. We just are not in a position yet to make that happen. If we can get where we need to be, then that will come back to you. I'm thinking maybe more like November at this point. And then the HOA status is something that we have out there that we continue to, unfortunately, it's one of those cans. We continue to kick down the road because of other pressing matters, but we're going to try to get that back in your for your consideration, hopefully in the real near future.
And also, if council, according to twenty-one dash twenty-three resolution, when we adopt that, if council does have any agenda items that they would like for put on the agenda, it needs to be in by it's seven days prior to that first Tuesday of the month. So that way it can be on a as, what do they call it? It's it's nothing, it's the approval of the agenda items that we can all talk about to see if it's worth going forward and having a presentation or having what other, making a presentation or talking about that. So that should be put on the first of first meeting every month that we will have that. So if you guys have, we all have any ideas, that's what it needs to be. Yes.
Thank you again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. So I had submitted an agenda request, you know, I guess it was August. And so I don't know, so I had to resubmit it. I'm not quite sure I understand now.
Is that the mind? You you sent it to us, so we could, we could actually, if everyone has had a chance to talk about it or look at it, we could talk about it to see if it's moving forward. I will, I think it's community engagement is a fantastic tool that we need to have in our arsenal. What I saw about that one was more of an advertisement when I looked at that. I love the idea of council being out there and involving the community and not having it so much fall on our staff because we are the face of the town. We were elected by the townspeople. So while I like that idea, I thought that particular one felt more like an advertising opportunity, and that's my opinion. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to weigh in on it?
I mean, I'm curious about it, how we can be more effective in communication and getting feedback from our town residents. So I'm always open to hearing more.
Do you think that's more of a webinar or a more of a presentation of someone in? Okay.
Just curious, Madam Mayor, have you shared it with Director Harrington? Did she have any thoughts about it?
I mentioned it to her, but I can share it with her.
Okay. If we're doing anything similar to it, if it's, you know, within scope of what we would do, just to
Thank you. And I certainly understand staff demands and all that. It was just one attempt from my attempt to say, to highlight the community outreach. And and there was just one vendor. It could be some other, or it could be other techniques. It was just my effort to try to help us, frankly, for these for me, to get better at it.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
That's all it was.
Okay. Public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the Incorporated Town Limits, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Do I have anybody that has signed up or anybody online?
No one in person has signed up.
Okay, and is there someone online that would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, Patty Mudd is online.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. Patty Mudd, one oh eight Burning Bush Court, Playta. Just a heads up, I know you guys are really running late. But those those colonial light posts, lamp posts on mainly the Grange, which are the oldest ones, but that even on St. Mary's and on Maple Avenue, those were peeling so bad that they were gray. They were big gray watches in some parts of them. And I know Bobby got him, got on Smeco a few times, and then Michelle got on Smeco. And finally, just before Christmas, Michelle called, got told to somebody at Smeco. And they sent out a guy with a two-inch brush and a can of paint who painted those lamp, white posts, lamp posts. And I'm just saying that that if, you know, if you're going to go, if they're going to go with the same ones, maybe there needs to be some kind of a maintenance thing put into the agreement or something. Because, you know, it it's just, they really were horrible. And if I'm not sure, I believe it was the Christmas before Brent came, so it was two thousand seventeen, probably.
Thank you. That is a great, great idea to to put in for consideration.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they looked terrible. And, you know, it's not wrought iron, wrought iron. They were gray underneath, and they were just kind of peeled, you know, the painted peeled off. Now, the old ones in Clark's Run are the same way, but that's another, you know, that's another problem. These colonial ones were really, really got, were bad that at that time, and I haven't looked at them recently, but that's it. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I would like to make one comment and congratulate our two council people over here, Councilwoman Bryant Ward and Councilman Jenkins, on their recent graduation from the Academy for Excellence in Local Governance at the University of Maryland. I know they just had their graduation, and it meant that you all completed the required coursework, which makes us stronger municipal leaders and a little bit more knowledgeable. So congratulations on completing that.
Thank you. To be, to be fully transparent, unfortunately, I could not attend the graduation, so.
Yeah, I couldn't attend mine back either.
Thank you.
But you will get the certificate in the mail, suitable for framing. Yep, it is. So with that, I move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Great meeting.